Vice President Lizer here. Thank you for joining us on this July 27th COVID-19 Town Hall uptick. It's been a minute since we've been together. We appreciate you all for joining us and we're going to be receiving timely info, the latest developments on the COVID-19 variants, and we do have our esteemed health professional cast here with us. So I'll be starting, open up in prayer as we always do, and then I will be handing it off to President. But before that, I'll give my updates and then hand it off to President. So he's busy as always. We appreciate his leadership. And then he'll be giving it to Dr. Jill Jim, the Executive Director of our Navajo Department of Health. So but let's begin, open up in prayer and then updates. We thank you, Lord, that we come to you Father, just needing, needing a Savior, needing salvation, needing healing. At this time, we lift up prayers for the whole Navajo Nation, this land where you've set us and where we continue to thrive, Lord, and we continue to advocate for our people, Lord. We'll work like it depends on us, but we'll pray like it depends on you. We thank you, Shesha, you and God for being in our midst, for healing our people, for touching our land and bringing the rain, Lord. Even in the rain, there's hardship, Lord, but we continue to ask you, Lord, for blessings for the animals and for the people of the land as they grow crops and produce, Lord bless their, the work of their hands. May their harvest be bountiful, Lord, that they'll be able to share it with many, Lord, and be blessed by it. So we thank you again. Be with us in this professional gathering here, Lord. Give us your wisdom, your knowledge, Lord, which to bless the whole Navajo Nation. Thank you, Lord. We give you praise, honor, and glory. Let's do your name, Shesha, you and God. Amen. So again, thank you for joining us. It is July 27th. We do have a lot of information and we'll get started here. So first things first, a choice to remain unvaccinated is a choice to get COVID potentially, right? I mean, you got your mask, you do exercise social distancing. We don't travel as much, so perhaps you are safe. Safe as places at home where you're receiving no visitors, you're not traveling anywhere, but we all know we need to get out, get our supplies, get our food, and you know, conduct business, pay bills, all that. So again, you know, many ask, why is COVID, why does it keep changing? And well, you know, because it's allowing to spread, it's morphing it, it's just changing into these variants that we hear of. So you know, when a virus can spread, it begins to mutate and you know, we'll allow all that information and knowledge to be cast or to be given by our health professionals. So to stop the spread of COVID-19, we urge you get vaccinated. In the United States, we see surging all around, mainly drilled down directly over the southwest here in the Four Corners area where we, the Navajo Nation, have our land here. More in Arizona, more than 1,000 new COVID-19 cases for, over 1,000 for the seventh day straight. So you can see the surging. We've seen numbers as low as 300 to 400 in the state. That's a little bit above 6 million. And you know, those numbers were looking great again for capita, but now we're starting to surge back over 1,000. So the total positive cases just getting ready to hit a million in Arizona, 16 months into this pandemic, sits at 918,609 with 1,441 new cases. So for those that are out, I mean, we are all sensing an urge to get things back to normal. When you do go out, you know, again, some areas don't have masks, they're not requiring it, but you know, we know you all are probably still wearing your masks. So good job there. Patsy County, 11,691 with two new cases. So good job of Patsy County. Navajo County, 17,121, 16 months into this pandemic with 36 new cases. So a little surge going on there in Navajo County. Be safe out there, please. Coquenino County, 18,403 with 12 new cases to report. So that rounds out our tri-county area in northeastern and northern New Arizona. Colorado, new cases of COVID-19 are rising in the majority of Colorado counties. And so this is the rate of tests that are coming back positive, indicating that the rise or the infection rate isn't due to an increase in testing for the virus. It's simply just a rise. It's just that people are, you know, relaxing their protocol, their own mitigation of COVID-19 virus. Year-to-date, Colorado, 571,087, 16 months, and new cases, 393 in Colorado. New Mexico, the state reports that 89 individuals are currently being hospitalized for, in New Mexico for COVID-19 as of Monday. There are 196,641 COVID-19 cases designated as having recovered by the New Mexico Department of Health. The state Public Education Department released its COVID-19 safety protocols as staff and students prepare to return to the classroom, some as early as next week. So these guidelines also ease face mask requirements for vaccinated students in middle schools and high schools. But masks will continue to be required at all of the elementary schools and for anyone who is unvaccinated or fails to provide proof of vaccination, the Education Department said in the news release. So 209,118, New Mexico statewide, 16 months into this pandemic with 632 new cases to report. There is a rise there. I would've seen as low as a couple hundred here just recently and now surging. Deeper drill down there in northwest corner of New Mexico, San Juan County, 15,929 with 32 new cases to report. Gallo McKinley County, 12,500 with 12 new cases to report there in the state of New Mexico. Utah, over 2,000 new positive cases have been reported since Thursday. So you know, that's about five, six days. There are now 343 people with COVID in Utah hospitals. The rolling seven-day average for positive tests is 646 per day. So 16 months into this pandemic, new numbers, 428,687 year in with 329 new cases to report. Down in southeastern Utah, 1,970 total positive cases with our own Utah Navajo Health System standing at 1,126 total positive cases. So and there you have it, the quad-state area reporting of the COVID-19 during this pandemic. Utah, Colorado, New Mexico, and Arizona here. So I know some of us are traveling out there. Let's all be safe, continue to be safe and really, you know, just staying local is the best thing, but continue to be safe, don your mask, you know, continue to be safe and just know your surroundings. So we appreciate you all. We're praying for you all. Again, we appreciate all of the leadership from our cabinet level, all the way up to our office of the President, Vice President, and our staff. So we look forward to being able to convene with you again real soon at our next Town Hall and also the radio forums there as well. So again, passing along vital information, needed information, and we know that you all who enact it and act upon it will be blessed and you will continue to stay safe. So once again, Vice President Lizer here. We appreciate you. I am happy to be with you. And I'll pass it on to Jonathan Nez here. Just continue to pray and bear down and then continue to just bring the protection of our Creator through our prayers to you. So again, Vice President here. It's been good to be with you all here. And so standing by in his office, I almost said studio, is our President Jonathan Nez. So sir, we appreciate your leadership. So take it away.
All right. Thank you, Vice President, for the prayer and for the update. And good morning to everyone throughout the Navajo Nation. Updates in and around the Navajo Nation. Right now, this is Jonathan Nez, Navajo Nation President, coming to you live from Arizon, here in Navajo Nation capital. And we've been giving updates for many, many weeks now, many months, giving you an update on what's happening with the COVID-19 pandemic, the virus, and what our team members have been doing. You know, we've gotten some, some rain and you know, we prayed for rain and God has answered our prayers. We prayed for rain, but we didn't pray how much would come down and a lot has come down in our communities. And so we have a lot of our personnel out there fixing roads to high-risk patients. And there is a website, if I can have Eli put that email address for the monsoon, if you have reports of our elders. And I know that our Navajo chapter, some do have equipment. They're out there helping our community members out. NDOT has been out with the counties, helping fix some of these major arteries, major roads throughout the Navajo Nation. So we just continue to ask for your patience. Every day it's raining, so we may fix a road and get washed out once again. And you know, we just ask for your patience. Today, the update I received, if you want to put this slide up, 31,305 confirmed cases thus far since the start of the public health emergency, start of the first case. And from the other day to yesterday, eight new cases. You know, we've seen a uptick in cases and we're starting to go back down. So continue, please, to wear your masks. Wear your mask. To this day, 1,372 people have lost their lives to COVID-19, zero deaths in the last 24 hours. So continue to pray for those families who've lost loved ones and continue to pray for those who've caught the virus that are recovering. You know, out of the 31-plus thousand, 29,817 have recovered. But these recoveries are just saying that they don't have COVID-19 in their system, but some may have some long-term health issues from it. So let's continue to pray for their recovery. And it shows you there on the slide, a breakdown from the service unit areas, including the border towns. And just keep in mind that when the states update about cases, they use Navajo Nation cases too. So you know, sometimes we make the states look good because we haven't had major outbreaks here on the Navajo Nation. So just keep that in mind when you hear updates on Arizona, New Mexico, and Utah. You are all doing an outstanding job and continue to do that as well. If you go to the slide two here, and Normal Musket did say some areas did not get a lot of rain. Let's continue to pray for rain on our Navajo Nation. I totally agree with that. We need the moisture. I seen the animals on the roads, you know, they're, they're happy and we should all be happy too. On the second slide there, it shows you the progression, 60 days of the infection rate. And you can see from June 4th all the way to June 14th, right around July 14th, I'm sorry, July 4th, you see an uptick in cases. And July 14th, we, you know, it looks high, but look at how many, we're averaging out to about 15 during that time, 15 daily cases. Other states, you have hundreds of cases, daily case counts. But a lot of these cases that we're receiving, we're getting information from the healthcare facilities and the contact tracers are people are leaving the nation, maybe not wearing their mask or not being vigilant when they're traveling and then they catch it and they bring it back to Navajo. So just be careful when you're out there. Wear your mask, take your hand sanitizers. You know, we got people out there that are still hesitant to get the vaccine. Majority of the people that are ending up in the hospitals are those that are not vaccinated, ladies and gentlemen. We encourage you to be vaccinated. Remember 12 and under are not vaccinated yet, so the virus is still here on the Navajo Nation. So the next slide, slide three, shows you a comparison from the start of the pandemic to today. You can see the comparison between the United States, which is orange, I'm sorry, United States, which is blue, the darker colored line, and the lighter colored line, orange, is Navajo Nation. And you see today, you can see the United States numbers starting to increase throughout the country. Here on Navajo, we saw a little uptick, but we're starting to see that it flattening out. So we continue to let everybody know to wear your mask here on Navajo. That's what's different about us here on the Navajo Nation is we continue to wear our masks throughout this whole pandemic. And I truly believe that is one of the reasons why we are not having a big surge here on the Navajo Nation. But let's not let up. Continue to take care of yourselves and your family. So if you go to the next slide, it shows you the neighboring jurisdictions in the United States. You can see, as I said, the beginning to rise in cases throughout the country. And you know, it used to be yellow, a lot of yellows and a lot of greens in the United States. Now look at today's numbers. You see the four-corner states all in orange. So there is an increase in daily case counts. Nevada is red, by the way, ladies and gentlemen, and other states in the southeast are red as well. So the next slide will show you a breakdown of the counties throughout the country. And for the counties within the Navajo Nation, in the Arizona side, you see the orange, went from yellow to orange. And on the New Mexico side, it used to be green, you know, McKinley County, San Juan County, now it turned back to yellow. Up in Utah, the San Juan County, Utah, is orange now as well. On the next PowerPoint, neighboring jurisdictions by county. So this just gives you a closer view of what's happening within the county. So continue to monitor those as you may travel. Best thing to do is stay at home, stay here on the Navajo Nation. Our strong recommendation. You go to the next slide, it shows you the chart compared to all the states throughout the Navajo Nation. Looks like Louisiana has had a big increase in the seven-day COVID-19, COVID-19 rate. And then you got Louisiana, Florida, right? Those states within the southeast, Arkansas. The first red line, I know you may not be able to see it, but the first red line, the top there is Utah. The four red lines are the four states and the yellow is the Navajo Nation. So Utah is the top there. The next one under that is Arizona. The third one is the yellow, Colorado's the Navajo Nation. And then we have the third red line, New Mexico, and the fourth one is Colorado. So that's an update on the seven-day COVID-19 rate of the four-corner states. I think Nevada is number, the gray line at the top, one, two, three, four, the fifth line. So they've seen a big surge in the state of Nevada. And if you go to the seventh slide, the seventh slide gives you an update on the, on the variants here on the Navajo Nation that have been identified. The Alpha variant, which is the UK variant, there's 123 cases and some of them have recovered. But the UK variant is here, you know, early on, that was of a lot of concerns. That kind of slowed down a bit. But here on Navajo, I commend the contact tracers for doing an excellent job in identifying these outbreaks and isolating them. And let's continue to pray for our contact tracers, our healthcare professionals. And the second one there, Beta, South African, nothing here on the Navajo Nation. Gamma, which is the Brazilian variant, four cases that have been identified. Again, some of these are, they've recovered. This is overall, these variants that have been identified here on the Navajo Nation. Delta variant, which is the India variant, there's 15, there were 15. Epsilon is the California variant, 20 cases here on Navajo. Washington. Nihe ashon. Uh ah tsizgo de deskhit nde. Arro akonde. Di sheen nihi chinton nize bi daasthi akon tcha di khaagi beni na. Do ye go da hi tchet. Arro kono nha nda lni shigi do. Nihe da bedi ni dole do abatso dohso na ashwana. Din dehlka agi do nihi keni hina nda lni shigi. So eh sheen uh hut ah hanne nihi chukona adeh liya dole. Shkaino lini hadaino lini do da da hliya do. Ki da dohni. Arro na da lchun dehla ni. Uh nihi masa nihi cheni nela bando nohtcha. Uh arro eh ya le nihi Washington de di bechida hliya da. Nihi do nha hasola otta. Keni klinigi. Hut ah nihi ya da ho ah. Ni masa nihi cheni nela. Hut ah nihi nihi eh naast azli gi. Uh ba da khwiliya ba da hliya da nihi dohni. Eh beni na anin da khyegi nihi eh yesi. Uh ah sheen nin nihi masa nihi cheni nela. Uh daan ni la che ayan shit eh ah haganda sadta daan ni nde. Banda nohtcha. Uh do uh ba da hliya ashwana. Do eh le nihi Washington de ya bechida dey ti. Beda bechida dey ti da dole. Do eh beni na che ahani. Uh daan ni eh go eh di lchunani chehodhi bechidi khati na lni gi. So heh na so kon tsoshi hanne nihi chukona adeh liya dole. Do kudo sheen Dr. Jill Jim uh bechikushleh dole. Di hanne. So thank you so much, Dr. Jill Jim. Turn it all, turn the time over to you. God bless you, take care of yourself, and wear your mask. Thank you so much.
Oh ya te nan sanatani president nez. Do di vice president nihi hana na tchegi o keh nihi na di nihi na di ni do. Do di at eh beni daesnoshan ge sheh eh Dr. Jill James. Do it is bahayon de bi keden si. Do ashinat isolha da eset di. Um na lni gi dekostenzkaagi eh za da hulgeni gi. Ati khaati. Ayot dehla na deskhit nihi na go do. Um around the the country too. So ah ba da hana san do nihi chinton nihi ze bi keskhit eh dey nasan do. Ado ato nha at se go ayashwana da. Ado ye go allini khaaga. Uh wetat in dehla ni ash um ah nihi chinton nihi ze bi keskhit eh dey nasan. Uh wet aden oh tsiso ha daeset nan. Ado um di khaati ises inden beni she di oh khaati. Ashi wetan ni do um. Na do ya han do tsat do Captain Johnson, do Dr. Fowler. Um ado di reopening plan ha nengi da otta gi eh um. On daan ne ha dot di on Thursday, there'll be a radio forum on KTNN. A class sheh daesan na shat do di safety messages da dot enegi. So uh we do have a school reopening plan and framework. As you go to the Navajo Department of Health where page and also the Navajo reopening. So I'll go ahead and hand over time to Captain Johnson. He's also a team member with our Health Command Operations Center to say a few words as well. So um thank you for listening this this morning and mask up and continue to follow all the CDC precautions. So take it away, Captain Johnson.
Dell, you want to go ahead and go next?
Yeah, sure. Uh let me share my speech here.
Captain Johnson, we were unable to hear you. Are you available now?
Yeah, eh beni. Hey, everyone. Um I'm Dell. Thank you, President, Vice President, and my leaders, Navajo Nation, and everyone on the call. I am with the Navajo Epidemiology Center and also with our Health Command Operations Center Epidemiology Team. And I usually provide a real brief update on our latest gaining criteria numbers. So this is a two-week time period from July ninth through July twenty-second. Or as our our latest analytical time period. This is our Gating Matrix. Um we are, we remain in the yellow. Um for now, I'll go over some numbers that um are that we have updated yesterday, actually. So this is a sixty-day time window from late May to July twenty-second. Uh last Thursday, so as you see the the bars, our numbers do fluctuate every day. As you can see here towards the the in July, basically, a little bit of an increase in cases, which President has mentioned. And you see this red line, which is our nine-day weighted center moving average. It has increased um a little bit over throughout July. So the past couple of weeks, we've been seeing an increase in cases. And we'll just continue to monitor our number of cases every day. And our infection rate uh for a seven-day infection rate is at one point one five. This is our latest heat map. Over a seven-day time period from July sixteen through July twenty-second, there were a hundred and five new cases, which puts our incidence rate at sixty-six cases per hundred thousand population. As I mentioned, will remain in the yellow level, even though the sixty-six is in the um in the orange. But there's an assessment period that we um have in place. Uh it's a two-week time period to make sure that we are um really uh uh in in the orange or yellow. So for now, we're going to stay in yellow. As you see, our border states, you know, Utah and Arizona are really seeing an increase in cases, especially Arizona, within the past week. And then on the nation, um Chinley saw, I I believe, the most cases, if I remember correctly, through a seven-day time period. And then Tuba Kayenta uh Winslow for defiance and Gallup as well. So um but we are seeing cases throughout the nation. Our our people who are unvaccinated. And also, some of the cases are twelve, twelve years of age and under. And those are, as you all know, are currently not eligible to receive the vaccine. So um that's the current uh situation on Navajo, based on the numbers and cases we're seeing. Some additional metrics here, test capacity is at five point three percent, a seven-day positivity rate. We were, I believe, before it was four point five, so we went up to five point three. And then our our testing has increased as well, from about three hundred and fifty the last time, to four hundred and twenty-one average daily tests over a seven-day period. Our hospital capacity remains below seventy, seventy percent as far as regular hospital beds and ICU beds. And then contact traces for daily new case ra- ratios at seven. We like to be above five, so that's um sufficient. This is just our latest uh vaccine profile, Navajo Nation, for ages twelve years and older. Uh we're seventy-one percent with at least one dose and sixty-four percent fully vaccinated. And we've administered ninety-nine percent of the doses that have been distributed to Navajo Nation. And then this is by county. Uh I think President already went over the by states, but this is by county, just within our southwest region, around our border states and counties. A lot of orange and yellow, so we don't really see any red within our immediate um uh areas as far as neighboring counties. Um so this is just the latest CDC profile. I know President already showed the Navajo Nation variant profile. So this is CDC, uh the US nationwide variant profile as of um this bar here, uh as of July seventeenth. As you can see, the orange bar is the the delta variant, which now, which has increased over time, which now makes up the eighty-three percent of all the variants. So it's really the predominant variant currently. And the the UK, the B one-one-seven, the UK variant has decreased over time. So it's mostly um the delta variant that is um predominant of all variants currently. So this is my last slide. So um as far as cases, uh like I said, we are actually in the the orange level uh with sixty-six cases per hundred thousand is our current incidence rate. Um testing remains um in yellow and public health capacity, uh we remain in yellow. And then with our hospital beds um below seventy percent, which is actually green. So um so we're going to remain in yellow. Uh we've been in yellow, level yellow for fourteen consecutive weeks. And we'll just uh continue to monitor the, you know, the cases and the getting criteria for for two weeks. Um and then in the end, if the cases continue to meet level orange, I think we'll probably reassess accordingly. So um that's where we are. Um I'm not exactly sure who I'm handing it off to uh next. Uh maybe Captain Johnson, maybe he's ready to go. Okay.
Yes, sir, Dell. Hey, this is Captain Johnson, and thank you, Dell, for for moving ahead. I had a little bit of technical difficulties. Thank you, President, for uh help assisting with that as well. Hey, everyone, this is Captain Brian Johnson. I serve as the acting area direct, uh area deputy director with the Navajo Area Indian Health Service. Um of course, I work alongside Ms. Rosalind So and Dr. Loretta Christensen and others uh at Navajo Area Office and appreciate their work as as we continue to move ahead with COVID nineteen and continue our response. Um it's, it was amazing listening to President Nez this morning, as well as Vice President Lizer and Dr. Jim, and thinking about just how long and how the number of months that we've been undergoing the COVID nineteen and the different challenges. And again, I just want to express my sincere appreciation uh to the Navajo Nation, to the leadership uh on on this Facebook session uh for all the great work that's been done over time. Um it's uh it's it's been rather inspiring over time. So so thank you all for that, and thank you for the partnership and friendships as well. And for Dell Yasi, I want to say a special appreciation for the work in the epidemiological side and working with others to gather data. If it weren't for the data, uh we would not have known where we stand on this COVID nineteen issue over time. And so it has played a critical role throughout. And we certainly need those epidemiologists providing that guidance for our clinical folks as well. Our clinical folks use all this these data, just like you use a speedometer on a dashboard of your vehicle. We have to understand what speed we're going at, we have to understand what direction we're going. And so they play a critical uh role, certainly, in in this. Again, I just want to uh mention that, of course, we we continue on uh locally, working together in partnership with tribal health organizations and our federal facilities, healthcare facilities across the Navajo Nation. We continue to share information, whether that be internal or or external, and trying to be as transparent as possible, possible about where we stand. And I think this Facebook session and this series that's gone on now for many, many months is a fine example of being transparent with the public and making sure that we all are communicating. Um as has been shared here this morning, you know, in terms of the cases of of COVID nineteen and what we're seeing about uh new incidents or new episodes of of COVID nineteen throughout the United States, we do know there are a number of states that are particularly hot um in terms of COVID nineteen transmission and the virus moving between folks in in those states. And we've seen over time with states of Missouri and Arkansas and Louisiana, more recently, that's that's really heated up and as well as we've seen uh the states over in Nevada and Colorado and and some of this information we shared earlier. And so we know that there are things that we can do, and and we've been doing that. I want to thank the Navajo people for that, who may be listening today or tuning in, um without the help of the public and without the guidance of leadership and providing uh just just exactly uh the actions that we can take to slow down the disease and to hopefully prevent it from spreading. And I I know it's been a, it's been a long haul over time, and we've heard enough about, you know, masks, but we we can't continue to say it enough that um uh the masks and the uh the 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 distance, that the social distancing that we've talked about over time and the vaccinations are just particularly incredible. And we'll continue to support and encourage and advocate the public that the COVID nineteen vaccine is the best tool that we can use, you know. I mean, if you just envision a toolbox that we would carry around if we wanted to to work on this disease. We we have our mask wearing, we have our social distancing, we have our hand washing, we have our educational materials, we have our vaccination, our vaccines and vaccinations. But the best tool in that toolbox is the vaccines. And we know that there, um we have plenty of them, we're not limited on those vaccines. We continue to have ample supplies. And so, again, if 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 maybe you've held off and maybe you're hearing now about um these variants that are happening around the country, and maybe you have a question about, hey, uh this this vaccine that's been around for while, is it effective for the uh the different variants that we're hearing about? We heard President Nez read off a list of the various types of variants. And I know, for example, the delta variant, that is is quite concerning, and there's other variants as well. But questions might come up about, hey, does the vaccine really, really work and effective? And it has demonstrated a high level of effectiveness on these variants. So whether you're talking about, you know, Moderna vaccine or the Pfizer vaccine or Johnson and Johnson, et cetera, um the key is getting a vaccine, one, one that is available to you. And again, we continue to work with our tribal health organizations, making sure that supplies locally are adequate and that we don't have any issues with that. So again, thank you for the the messaging this morning uh from the Navajo Nation, whether it be from the Office of President and Vice President or the Navajo Department of Health and also the Epidemiology Program. All of this is great information to keep the public in tune with what's happening. And from the Navajo Area IHS standpoint, we we truly appreciate that. Um so also, to go along with what I just mentioned, we spoke about the um uh the number of, you know, of vaccine availability. We also continue to do our testing. And so COVID nineteen testing, uh don't feel that it's gone away, it's still available. And if you have any question about whether or not you may have been exposed to a a positive individual who was found to be positive with COVID nineteen, you can get tested. If um if you think you might feel some symptoms that maybe, maybe it's something that you're not familiar with or something that's newly developed, you can get tested. And all you need to do is uh pick up the phone, contact your local healthcare facility that you normally uh uh get, receive treatment from. And certainly feel free to um to request the testing. And all of us will continue to provide that testing until further notice. So don't think that that's going away. Um we know that in Indian country, again, we're we're around one point seven million doses have been distributed and one point five or more have been actually administered. And that's been a huge benefit to Native Americans and Alaska natives throughout the United States, including Alaska. And so we're we're glad that that commitment and dedication is is happening. And again, President Nez touched on. And again, President Nez touched on the vaccinations for twelve to fifteen-year-olds. Again, we still are at that twelve-year-old age and up. And at this point, there, there are no vaccinations that are happening less than twelve years of old, or years of age. And so I encourage parents, guardians to take the time if you haven't done so yet, if you have children and adolescents within that twelve to fifteen-year-old range, age range, and, and take those, take them in to get their vaccination. It'll protect them, it'll protect you, and it'll help us continue to keep the numbers down. And I really do think the work that the Navajo people are doing with these vaccines and with everything else that's going on, that we're doing an outstanding job. And I, I love to hear when we, when we hear that some of the rates are going down, that's just very, very positive. So also wanted to mention real, real briefly that there continues to be some questions that we received concerning booster shots. For those individuals who have already got a, a COVID-19 vaccination, there are questions of whether we need to get a booster shot. At this time, there is, is not an indication or not a final decision on boosters and whether or not they will be needed. But we are following the FDA Centers for, and the Centers for Disease Control and National Institutes of Health for guidance on this. And that could change, and if it does change, this will be one of those venues that we'll be able to report that and to make sure that, that you're aware if and when boosters become available and whenever they're suggested or recommended by the health experts who are conducting studies and monitoring how the current vaccinations are, are doing. I also just want to remind people again, we talked last time a little bit about health misinformation, meaning that in some cases, we're seeing quite a bit of inaccurate, false information that is being transmitted by the internet, it's being transmitted sometimes by journalists who maybe are not reputable journalists. And I think just to be wise to the fact that there is a lot of misinformation out there that has impacted, in some cases, the ability of the vaccination, the percentage of individuals vaccinated to increase because people are misinformed. And please only look to accurate or reliable sources of information, whether that's local or national. Look for those organizations that have demonstrated, you know, the, the knowledge, the competency and the professionalism to, to only share information that is accurate information. We want to make sure we're being truthful and transparent with the public and we're wanting to make sure we just give the right information and what is appropriate information. But the, the, the major points today again is to, we're, we're fortunate now because the number of cases here on the Navajo Nation are staying low and we, but we still have to remain vigilant on that. The next item is we continue to monitor the variants as President Nez touched on. And there are multiple, multiple variants and we continue to watch those. We're also watching how the vaccine, vaccines are doing and fighting those variants. And we're continuing to wear our masks here on the Navajo Nation, which is very, very good. That's been extremely helpful and we're continuing to advocate for folks to wash their hands and get tested if you feel that you need, that, that testing will be available, the vaccinations will continue to be available. And then again, be sure to only pay attention to those reputable sources of information, those who are, who have a scientific background and who are credible. And let's, let's all just continue to move ahead on this and let's continue to reach community immunity by protecting yourself, protecting your family and our elders by getting vaccinated. At this time, I'll turn the time back to Dr. Pafelia Fowler. And thank you, Ms. Dr. Fowler, for everything you do as well. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Captain Brian Johnson, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, my colleagues and the behind-the-scenes control Eli, and then also our epidemiology team Dell and your staff. Kodochei, chidetjikmae, chiki, chokhori kini, bashechin, kapakapah, chit, ado, chet, nalak, kudus apah yere, arey, chikke, kodo, kina, tachhun lini, laj, dasike, eya, ashhod, eykodo, nichitchi, don, heze, baddad, esbalon, dak, kay, ado, kina, atak, apsi, asine, hun, hunzago, be, ikha, beth, bebe, chidi, kha, ey, kohkodo, eya, ba, benhilnaw, ilne, do, eydi, kodo, yaj, lini, ad, na, askay, bana, nishna, ei, eydi, ya, ishdatsoh, nast, ey, yorkhale, da, donle, ya, ishdatsoh, na, dino, ana, ki, yorkhale, jeh, eyshi, na, aska, i, kodo, benhilnaw, di, taht, eydi, eyka, eydi, shji, ati, di, litson, na, ey, ati, bi, ikha, oko, ani, oyot, deh, hona, na, tlan, deh, lteh, jodi, lo, kos, nast, ey, ta, dahna, ni, higi, di, taht, soh, di, asthadi, jeh, jeh, na, alka, higi, taht, soh, yorkhale, da, na, dino, asthah, histhah, yorkhale, donle, ya, ishdatsoh, na, dino, asthah, yorkhale, jeh, jeh, eydi, na, aska, oyon, lley, ya, ishdatsoh, di, oy, yorkhale, da, jeh, ita, ey, jula, furt, be, di, ne, ita, ayon, hita, deh, chutzah, ado, ya, na, des, kido, di, taht, da, yorkhale, na, ey, hita, deh, na, des, keth, oko, di, yesa, ba, ba, da, ah, ho, ba, da, atsigi, eyshi, ad, beda, delna, hi, benatje, ado, di, chah, parle, ey, ati, oy, ugo, na, donle, jeh, chunli, belkaha, zoj, ad, ey, litshi, go, na, enar, keth, ado, di, soh, le, belkaha, zoj, do, ye, go, na, na, ni, ado, hos, doh, jeh, ado, lach, jeh, ni, na, jeh, ey, ati, litsog, ne, na, ne, keth, ado, di, na, altha, olie, ne, deh, ltseda, ta, Nezat, dino, ashla, di, ochun, la, ey, and, dab, eska, oko, di, shji, ge, ey, alha, ad, jene, ey, des, dino, ah, des, di, Nezat, dino, na, dino, alha, oko, ne, ena, na, ke, oko, azel, e, belna, has, ad, jeh, ad, jeh, ey, ses, keh, lini, ey, ati, da, da, na, keth, has, ani, gi, ado, di, nda, alka, ey, ishla, alha, abed, na, ishla, nda, alka, oko, nde, ad, ey, e, bella, ini, se, ey, ta, so, di, il, il, ey, asta, abed, na, ini, ka, ado, di, ni, belne, belha, so, donle, ishlat, di, belha, so, jeh, ad, jeh, se, bahata, ya, do, se, ah, tahata, ya, do, ey, di, alha, abes, obey, roth, ka, wo, ey, ya, astray, ya, bella, ho, ey, di, alha, hatte, be, be, ba, da, ass, chen, nichi, belne, lini, ado, ast, is, en, lini, alha, ba, ba, be, ba, o, c, ey, di, ya, do, bella, o, ne, da, abes, obey, roth, khatje, oko, nichi, belne, en, lini, ka, alha, abes, obey, roth, khatje, percent, en, lini, en, ninety-nine percent, ey, oko, ne, la, en, kiti, ne, en, lini, fa, is, en, lini, bahata, ya, ey, kodo, ba, ay, he, ni, se, ado, di, ishlat, di, belha, so, don, jeh, belne, belha, so, jeh, ad, jeh, di, ketsog, ne, kide, ad, jen, he, ati, ay, ya, deh, na, keth, oko, nde, di, ishlat, di, belha, so, ad, jeh, ey, ye, go, deh, da, des, kimi, na, go, shik, edo, shidne, ba, o, nas, sen, ado, ye, o, di, and, and, da, kain, lley, la, chapa, belha, da, hos, soh, go, di, lley, soh, le, kaha, zoj, ad, jen, le, ye, go, deh, na, des, keth, ado, di, hos, doh, jeh, doh, jen, jih, shna, aben, hil, wi, ne, oko, di, nichi, deh, ne, abel, kaha, zoj, lley, lni, gina, na, keth, oko, yot, roh, doh, da, ben, sah, jeh, ey, ay, ya, deh, ya, na, des, keth, oko, all, ad, ati, ye, go, litshi, litshi, jeh, belgo, ay, ye, deh, ni, va, da, ha, njen, jeh, jeh, ad, jeh, shine, la, shin, la, ah, ho, nichi, ey, da, kaido, ad, shin, da, an, ne, sh, eydi, da, ta, jeh, ad, jeh, belna, has, ad, jeh, oy, uin, hita, ho, ta, ta, do, kaid, oko, ad, ne, shin, la, ilna, has, kaid, o, koi, na, da, des, na, oko, ado, di, wearing, eh, deh, lini, il, ah, at, altsena, ba, da, hui, ne, eya, alha, Nezat, dino, has, khatje, no, ah, cha, o, donle, la, belga, doh, na, adi, bini, bi, han, be, han, ne, eydi, alha, Nezat, dino, ah, se, bi, dino, ah, se, bi, oko, na, dino, ah, ashla, bena, ne, itsoh, oko, ne, la, shi, chapa, bena, da, doh, na, oko, ed, da, lini, it, ah, oko, don, da, alka, hi, di, is, eh, ah, ho, bahata, nehi, ey, be, da, delna, ah, ado, lach, jina, da, ilna, ilna, shin, la, ba, da, ass, sin, deh, azel, ey, on, yah, ey, ya, do, lato, be, be, ka, o, ey, shi, lato, is, eh, bahata, zine, kohkodon, jida, yo, keth, shik, edo, shidne, jina, tahn, lini, do, is, eh, in, doh, da, alka, ay, ashhod, is, eh, nah, tahata, ne, hil, ne, oko, di, na, nehi, be, da, doh, na, ad, ey, di, litsoi, bi, ne, kaid, or, jeh, ado, shan, litsoi, yalo, gi, bi, kaid, deh, oko, ad, jeh, ta, nde, kaid, ado, di, na, alka, doh, is, eh, na, alka, hi, jee, doh, da, alka, ay, ati, litsoi, yalo, jee, bi, ati, ikha, ado, di, is, eh, belna, has, ad, jeh, ad, jeh, ey, doh, kesh, ne, ta, ti, kaid, ey, she, on, hil, feh, has, zon, doh, le, ah, at, edo, kesh, go, doh, ni, ltoh, ah, eh, ni, se, nchonda, ah, chi, in, it, es, ik, edo, shidne, eh, ado, kodo, yaj, lini, Captain Brian Johnson, ad, jeh, ey, di, is, eh, belha, zoj, it's, la, deh, na, ani, lato, famous Rosalind So, doh, Dr. Christensen, wo, ya, is, eh, in, eh, ad, is, easy, da, ani, ad, eh, doh, dan, hil, ne, il, he, he, kwa, hi, kha, ne, jah, hi, doh, na, ani, no, lini, kodo, ba, nda, hui, lne, ho, di, aben, ta, kesi, bi, jeh, hil, nda, hui, lne, ado, trida, ah, ni, chi, in, it, ah, ey, ya, hil, ne, oko, ah, ni, jidne, abel, da, hui, lna, eh, lato, be, katchon, na, ni, se, doh, lato, ey, nichi, kete, doh, chi, jen, ni, se, ne, oko, di, nichi, na, go, ishlat, di, kaha, zoj, jeh, ad, jeh, oy, uin, na, ni, shik, edo, shidne, oko, ashhod, ad, ado, ye, ah, ho, da, da, kha, jen, hil, ne, ado, ey, yesa, bo, hul, ne, ey, di, is, eh, bahazne, ey, ashhod, eh, is, lini, nacha, ato, ol, ni, belna, ha, da, o, tsij, jen, hil, ne, ey, is, eh, ne, ati, go, no, ado, di, na, alka, doh, ati, nda, alka, ey, doh, nacha, ba, o, nas, sen, ado, di, nacha, alch, jen, it, kke, jeh, kke, da, lini, na, hita, ta, donle, te, ko, beda, kaid, is, eh, ati, bah, no, oko, nde, lato, ta, beda, kaido, ya, go, ey, ato, is, eh, ah, le, la, eyshi, lo, ati, be, kide, ni, it, ey, doh, ati, shin, da, alka, jeh, oko, ni, hil, ne, ado, di, ay, da, is, eh, nacha, tahata, ya, eh, is, eh, da, nacha, ta, assi, jeh, ey, ad, lley, sthah, des, doh, yu, wach, eh, so, da, nde, se, ey, sh, ah, da, booster, gi, na, hatlun, da, doh, non, da, ado, kide, jeh, ey, ato, ah, le, da, doh, ato, be, la, alde, da, eyshi, ah, kodo, benhilnaw, doh, ni, be, la, as, ne, oshi, eh, o, doh, le, oko, nde, ati, bah, wi, ni, doh, ati, is, eh, in, be, be, da, hul, nehi, doh, lley, it's, la, deh, kina, keth, be, be, da, hui, di, eyshi, ati, ad, jen, deh, kha, doh, ati, ya, da, eh, ado, kodo, ni, jidne, eh, da, lini, ha, shi, tsoko, kodo, sah, lini, laha, on, eh, yot, lhi, doh, doh, o, 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 ya, hul, ne, oy, di, lta, aben, ta, kesi, doh, social media, deh, ne, ne, eh, da, ah, sah, da, ya, da, han, ne, ad, jeh, da, ad, jish, ash, an, ne, hona, ha, ta, da, han, no, ah, sah, sah, da, di, ca, ey, oy, ah, da, ani, hil, ne, oko, nde, sida, ah, ni, da, doh, no, ey, ta, is, eh, in, da, vich, da, o, nas, ne, hil, ne, ado, keshi, ah, ba, o, tli, ad, jeh, o, shidne, oko, di, na, nehi, eh, ani, ya, des, keth, doh, ah, ni, be, ta, o, hui, li, ya, eya, na, go, ne, ne, jeh, jen, no, eh, na, ne, khatje, jeh, o, o, jeh, o, hul, ne, kodo, ni, jina, tahn, lini, ado, is, eh, is, eh, tahata, ne, ey, doh, ati, belhas, ado, ah, es, ik, edo, shidne, kodo, shi, shit, eh, lini, di, ol, tcha, na, ra, jeh, jeh, ad, jeh, doh, ba, tcha, doh, ah, nichi, o, ni, ol, tcha, na, ra, jeh, school, ri, op, ni, deh, lini, ad, jeh, doh, na, tani, da, lini, il, keth, na, zel, latsa, ne, jee, bena, tahn, lini, il, keth, da, ne, eyshi, ltoh, kodo, yen, hil, da, hua, doh, ne, nacha, alch, jen, lini, bah, ha, has, sen, o, oko, nde, shik, edo, shidne, eh, di, nichi, chidi, don, heze, baddad, esbal, eh, di, nichi, deh, abel, kaha, zoj, ati, ah, o, ta, ishda, ish, na, shi, da, un, tsa, deh, edo, da, ado, ben, da, kain, jita, ni, nde, nichi, ati, nacha, alch, jen, doh, nachan, da, nisha, ba, da, alch, chai, otsan, da, nisha, kune, eh, bah, ha, ni, se, ni, bini, na, ati, nichi, don, heze, baddad, esbalon, da, kaid, dab, di, ne, ado, kodo, shi, ad, jeh, school, ri, op, ni, ba, na, ho, jish, doh, le, Ms. Gani, you have the floor to talk us about the reopening. Thank you.
Ah, Yahtzee, here, hat, Shama'ou, ado, Yahtzee, Leadership, President Nez, Vice President Lizer, Dell from the Department of South. I also have on the line from Department of the Net Education, Michellea Yellowhair, who's the Director of Cognia as well. We are here to provide some updates in regard to where the nation is at in terms of its guidance to schools for its safe reopening. She, kodo, shid, da, jeh, Pat Gani, eya, gini, she, eh, ado, Acting Superintendent, eya, shenan, nish, kwa, e, Department of the Net Education, sah, ha, zan, e, di, eya, kwa, e, ol, tcha, ah, nda, zne, be, jeh, ho, jish, AAD Fall 2021 for school year 2122, eya, school leaders, da, lini, gi, principals, those superintendents, ado, other school administrators, eh, belne, nish, kodo, Department of the Net Education. In the most recent past, we have been working alongside the school leadership for those that are located here on Navajo and then also our colleagues within districts that are located near Navajo Nation. There has been a lot of discussion and conversation and work placed into a development of the Navajo Nation Schools Reopening Plan, which is the guiding tool for schools to follow in their design of a more personalized school reopening plan for the schools that are located within your communities. The Department of the Net Education has set up a way to receive those plans from schools. We are reviewing those plans when they come into us here at Department of the Net Education. We have the ability to provide comments on these plans and some of the attachments to that overall plan for your children's school include an assessment. That assessment is a document in which your schools will have created a team of individuals representing fields of expertise such as the health, public health, safety, a teacher perspective, a parent perspective, and definitely an administrator within your school to conduct a walkthrough on the basis of a checklist that we have devised. Much collaboration has taken place with other entities such as BI E as to what they are foreseeing to be a minimal set of standards for school's safe reopening. And that checklist is the guiding tool for this team within your schools to conduct the walkthrough. And basically, the team will debrief after conducting the walkthrough to determine if your school has all of the parameters for safety in place and your schools should be deemed sufficient and safe for reopening by this team. And we also, from Department of the Net Education, are asking the schools to submit an attestation form subsequent to that team determining the school to be safe for reopening, given the protocols and layers of mitigation strategies. The governing board within your schools will have met and accept the plan to be a, one that supports a safe reopening. And those are all accompanying documents that we have asked our school leadership to supply to Department of the Net Education. This is a requirement of your schools well in advance of the reopening for the fall semester. So we do have that guidance of document in place. Most recently, also in addition to Navajo Nation School Reopening Plan, we have worked with the Navajo Department of Health under the leadership of Dr. Jill Jim to create a framework for safe school reopening as, as well. That is another tool and resource for your schools to utilize with examples and set of standards as to what we can foresee and expect to have in place for your students within your local schools. For example, some of the more universal safety precautions that are required of our school mask wearing. While the surrounding states and counties may have let up and eased their restrictions on face mask requirements, here on here on Navajo Nation, in consistency with the public health orders, schools will be maintaining the requirement of the face mask wearing when the schools reopen. So those are some of the guiding tools that Department of the Net Education has set in place so that we can assure that your children have a school that has a plan for a safe reopening. I do want to emphasize, I'm just kind of monitoring some of the chats and comments that are being made here. It is very much an option for families for children to re-enter in person. So with that said, what that actually means is that the school leadership need to be working with their families within their respective communities to avail an option of remote learning. If a family is not comfortable and does not feel that it is safe for his or her child to return to in-person learning, we expect the schools to make provisions for a remote learning. The other plan that we have also asked schools to submit for is a hybrid learning. That hybrid learning model accommodates for a combination of in-person and remote learning so that we can meet the needs of our families. We do recognize that families all are at different levels and comfort zones in terms of how they envision their children to resume instruction this fall. And so for that reason, we have emphasized heavily early on to our school leadership that they work directly with you as their stakeholders, parents, and then also students as well to gain your input in the design, first of all, of the school reopening plan and then also to have available options for virtual learning if that's what you so choose. The schools actually, we want to be prepared as best possible. Schools should have a plan in place for a exclusive remote learning. If in the event that we have to go back to exclusive remote learning, what does that look like? What does the school foresee? So that plan is to be available and articulated with the community so that you have clear expectation and understanding as to what that mode of learning will look like. The other type of plan that we've asked our schools to have prepared and approved and ready to utilize is the hybrid. That's the combination of remote learning and in-person. And then finally, to have a plan in place for in-person learning, what does that look like? How will that be deemed safe? And the layers of mitigating strategies? How is that being communicated to all stakeholders? How frequently is this going to be reviewed? And how are the adjustments going to be made going forward? And so those are all of the guiding tools that Department of the Net Education in collaboration with Navajo Department of Health, members of Epidemiology Team, representation from CDC as well, and then pediatricians as well. We have garnered their support and cooperation and input in developing these guiding tools for our schools to follow. I do want to emphasize that you, as parents, have a voice in your school's reopening plan. We have been insistent with our school leadership to actively seek your input. Amado yaetan linigi ado achedo unalatan lichchene yajin sahigi ei di kodon olthcha nas nello bena taani linigi chayo obel nahal nish ea bedi ni go ek akhunza de eh holjish di kodon a hundred and thirty-six schools senel la di kwa ege naabeho benahasabkaa all varying school types: public schools, private parochial schools, BIE-operated and tribal control grant schools. But nonetheless, they all are required to furnish a plan for a safe reopening for your children. Ei aja survey itolni ado aqut a virtual meeting lahnaatle chayo be taaholne hash ei taabenaha ati olthcha aanal nehi gi aja chayo naha bilbehoszen go ohe eh quut a ea ea kodon ah bilbilne nish. Actually, this work has been taking place over the course of the past year. Since the schools have closed, we have garnered support and then also a close collaboration with your school principals and superintendents to help them understand how we will approach this reopening in the safest manner possible. So I just wanted to emphasize the need for your voice to be heard. If you have not yet contacted your individual schools about where they are with their reopening plans and then also your choice and options that are available to you, we have been emphasizing that they make available all relevant and appropriate types of learning platforms for your comfort and for the safety of your students at this time. So with that, I just want to emphasize that we do have a a number of fifty-seven schools that have submitted their plans. And we look forward to also receiving the BIE-operated school plans. They are in process of collecting those plans on that side. And we hope to receive those plans for our review well in advance of the school's reopening. So with that, I just wanted to again emphasize to parents and caretakers on this call here today. If you have not yet contacted your local school about its plan and you feel that you have not yet been heard, please do find the time to contact your school administrator and be involved and ask those relevant questions so that you are confident that your child will be safe in whatever form and fashion that you plan for them to rejoin instruction this fall. So I just wanted to have that little piece of information as part of my closing comment. Please continue to mask up as our children re-enter schools. It is very imperative that we educate ourselves and the children that we have about their personal responsibilities surrounding staying safe, wearing their face mask, carrying their hand sanitizers with them, and then keeping a safe distance from others following all safety protocols within their schools and on their bus routes as well. I hope that we will have a resumption of a safe school for School Year 21-22. And much of this rests with us to exercise safety protocols for our students' safe return to learning. So with that said, I just wanted to express my appreciation to President and others on the call for allowing an opportunity for Department of the Net Education to provide the updates surrounding safe school reopening. Hihe.
Hihe shi chae a de nhi chahui ni akko shik edo shidne kodon laa do adone kechiyaholne hihe chala ei di nahaa alchene nlini pancha nitsen a niti ene ado a niti ea yama niti le yama waliye ni sanesani waliye ni vetsado yi da ea ea eh quet kodon ni shiyaj shaeve kwa e bahol yaado cha isi pancha nze jo da nhebe dohni do laa nhyiatahaa ado laa ei yeegon hiyan taat niho shoo shiyaj shaeve jo jo ochut a yaat hi di nahaa alchene da olthcha naa chaya da laa ado da ilthcha da ado chashine laa ei di ltaaben se kesi yohol a ado chashit eh shi ei ochut a naan tini aben na ike de dinestni akko kodon hi chahod ani ei di aja olthcha waliye je aja na taani da hollno principal da dohliye vice principal ado baaltha acha shine la lead teacher da da hollno elket nan de ado aja chaya ilnene ado chidilso neilpasi ei do istehwaseni da ho ayu aja ndal nish akko di nahaa alchene nlini aja itchanda ilte shi aida laa ho itchanda isde akko di khatshana na zidi bini ta osa adonle bini ta sapuyi itchana iltehi jo ei kodon yaholne olthcha naa raaja eh abe basala a de ea di reopening chleni nlini chade de le chait a ei kwa enhiyajin hiyeve elke shi kaidan linii ado deil nish eh ba da olthcha i ba acha yaado le aani ei di do kwasas eh taabedi nlini shoshdoit ini naal nehi eh chait a ei ba acha yaado eh eh kaidi tju dehne aja baaltha de te aja laa do yunahas ado laa do yei chadzi akko nde do shi ei aat edo bilbehoszen da jo chashine laa epa olthcha i ito dohni ndal nishita adon lhihronne da che do shibehoszen da da nini naahotlo eh na olthcha naa raaja na taan nohlini chayo nahan ndal nish bebe taholne amado yeenlini at she analatan linii chayo bebe taholne quut a ei di itchandol da hot a ea di kwa e temperature che da eteil i do da dohno a nhihebe ekhi taholne dojja nhilne ea ea chashine laa kwa yama yae ensahen linii bebe ntabui nehda ne a tsen nini nhebe ntaan ne jo chashine laa kola shido shihronne daahatne ado kodon alha nezat dino acha dino aashtchan akko ne naa ei di olthcha nlinigi bilnahas ati bennebe shahaut sabkaa i public school dehne private skoapia eh o ayu olthcha nas mil jo bahos bena laa laa do shido sha olthcha nde akko aani nahaa alchene nlini bahah nitsen So out of one hundred and thirty-six schools on our Navajo Nation, fifty-seven of them have completed and submitted their plans. Estla dino a tustet akko ne naa ei di quut a da olthcha do le quut a ba acha yaado danlini akko ne na yahan dey jja tustet dino a nast ea ea ati ki do yahan dey jja da eh she chait a jo quut a ei kodon hinatah ni tlini hash itado yahan da ji jja da beda zine nahaa alchene nhiyajin hihe wey nlini da ilnishi bataauhtcha da zoda bahat dasen sen da jo sanitlaa hotan ten ze ilkes eh shi lo aja olthcha ben ya na raaja olthcha naa taan nohlini eh nhihinhasen laa shik edo shidne ashhon de shi obata dohli di kwa opa rodesa nee da nhebe shi shaman shaa nhebe naa taani inhilne jo shisha olthcha anshline de shne akko di bilaganek eh jo embrace technology danhilne nchi aaben se kesi bihi taat iilte eh da tsawo waliye desos i bihi taat i kaid jo ochut a nsi ilkes beda niil naa da tsabelahniil a da ts jo a dan hi laha se kes